Next on the agenda will be...
Mr. Chairman, if we can go to the FCMC. I'm gonna do the introduction, if it's okay, and Mrs. Solomon will just follow that, if that'll be all right.
That'll be fine. FCMC, I'll get it.
Yeah, they're here. FCMC stands for Frank McComb Consulting, and that's the gentleman right there. And sitting next to him is Sarah Kelty, his assistant, and they will be giving a brief presentation after I do some introductory remarks. I'm gonna start because I have a sort of a sequence of things, and I think it'll make more sense if I sort of wade right into it, and that way you'll all be warmed up and ready to go when Frank and Sarah stand up. So, this is item number one of my report. Inform the board that FCMC is here to speak directly to the board regarding their work on Alligator Point. They will describe their progress, but I want to explain to the board that FCMC, Pam Burnow, and I have agreed to a division of duties. FCMC will be responsible for developing a long-term recovery plan and for writing any PWs associated with it. I will consult with FCMC, but I will take the lead on these short-term issues with the road. The reason that is more logical for me to be involved in the short-term problems is that I'm here in the county, and I'm also more knowledgeable about the county resources in case there really is an emergency and we've got to deal with something. So, I just assume, I think it's... I mean, if you all don't want me to be involved, that's fine, tell me that, but I think it'll be beneficial for me to do the short-term stuff. I will use Pam Burnow as consultants when appropriate, but at this time, I'm working directly with the FEMA representative who's coming to the county once a week. I met with the county's FEMA representative at the EOC on Wednesday, January 30th, and then Clay Kennedy and I also spent some time on the point on Thursday, January 31st, and Mr. Kennedy is not here today, he's sick, so I apologize for that. But this is what Clay and I recommend, and Clay Kennedy for you all is Dewberry Engineers, and they're the county engineers. A board approval would direct Dewberry to develop the bid specs and an FDEP permit if necessary for an emergency beach berm to protect Alligator Drive. I've already turned the berm information into FEMA rep to write up the PW. The FEMA rep advised me the county can move forward towards building the beach berm at the same time she is processing a draft PW and scheduling a site visit. So, I'm trying to collapse as much time as possible. We will not sign a contract for construction until the PW is approved, and I'm trying to get all the other steps completed. Clay Kennedy and I, our coastal engineers, and that's Mike Nebraska, have talked through several issues associated with the beach berm, and we think it can be built, but all of the debris will have to be removed, so we are not burying any debris. One of the factors affecting how fast we can build is whether DEP will extend its emergency order for Hurricane Michael, and yesterday, the emergency order was extended. So, we now have the opportunity to build a structure on Alligator Point without having to get a permit in hand. So, let me just stop right there for the time being and just show you what's gonna happen. Now, this is a terrible drawing, and I could blame it on some kindergarten kid, but unfortunately it's me. So, this is a coast, I suppose, this is pre-Michael. Here's waves, as you all may recall, Alligator Point. The revetment we had was fairly vertical, and then the road was on top of the revetment, and then it went up to the land here. After Hurricane Michael, the revetment was lowered substantially, and so what happened was the hurricane storm surge came in and pushed the revetment so far inland that now, when you go out there, you have some rocks on the shore, but then you have the road and you have no rubble behind it. Split the revetment in half, essentially, what it did, pushed it back. So, we will be building a sand berm in this location here. That's where the sand berm's gonna go. It's gonna be sacrificial, we know it. It's gonna be something that's gonna be a problem to maintain, we know it. We've told all this to FEMA, we'll wait to see how they describe it, but that's the location of the sand berm, and it'll be there as we work on the road, and then ultimately, this is beach-compatible sand. Ultimately, it will wash down and hopefully continue to increase the beach area there, so we will be putting sand in there that can stay there. The challenge for us is we have to remove the debris that is currently in that location. You cannot bury debris on the beach. So, that's something we're having to work with FEMA and with... We're gonna have to figure out a way to calculate the amount of debris and remove all that. So, that's project number one, short-term project number one, involving the sand berm built and permitted and constructed. FEMA, or DEP has given us extended the emergency order for all the counties affected, so we're gonna take advantage of that and try and get this done in the next couple of months. That's our goal right there. So, that's item number one of my report there. And then, secondly, the engineers think we should file for another PW to remove all the debris in the existing right-of-way that the temporary road is, and then build a two-lane wide temporary road to get rid of the traffic signals. The benefit would be the area would begin to get cleaned up, a two-lane one would appear, and the traffic signals would go away. We need to move this debris anyway if we relocate the road to private property because DEP is going to make us at some point. By no means will this two-lane road be permanent, be a permanent road, but it will help the point return to normal. This PW will be a little harder to write because the engineers need to figure out a way to quantify what it is the contractor is bidding on as the debris that we need to move has some value to it. For the board to understand, there are basically three kinds of debris mixed together. Large granite boulders from the original revetment that cost a million dollars to put there some fifteen years ago. That granite needs to be extracted from the debris and saved. Then, there's a hundred or more concrete precast barriers the county used along the edge of the road to keep it in place, and all those got to wash the other side of the road, and those need to be saved. And then, there's true debris, which is asphalt, concrete, rebar, some housing debris, needs to be hauled away. So, in the post-storm deal, what we'll do is we'll basically wipe, remove all this debris here and just extend the road out. So, we'll have a two-lane road in its basic configuration, but it'll be much cleaner. That two-lane road, then, will be perhaps used as the bypass road as we construct the new road. So, we'll have to have some way of getting in and out anyway, so that road has some value for a while. So, that's the goal that I'm gonna be involved in, and those are two projects that I plan to be involved in, and we'll certainly modify this as issues come up. But, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Frank or Sarah to introduce themselves and to speak about what they're doing, and I'll be honest with you, Frank, if you can also speak about the obligation you had to the county based upon your contract with the state, because we want you to be here to punch it to the goal line.
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate your time, Alan, and those comments.
Give me your name.
My name's Frank McComb. I'm the president and CEO of FC McComb Consulting. We do disaster recovery, disaster manage work, management work, and focus on resiliency and hazard mitigation as one of our primary objectives, to serve clients. The state of Florida had retained us for Hurricane Michael to serve as a state disaster recovery coordinator representative, and literally, that role is to help local jurisdictions characterize their needs for disaster recovery, to recover more fully, more comprehensively, and more resiliently, and then identify myriad resources to be able to fund those needs. Right now, our firm is performing this service throughout all the declared area for Hurricane Michael, so we're supporting every county and local jurisdiction with putting together plans of action and helping them to get on the path to develop eligible and compliant projects that are planned out from the start to be sure that through the life cycle of the project, be able to get to completion and really realize that additional benefit of the resiliency. So, as part of that effort, as the SDRC representative, I spend a lot of time in the joint field office in Tallahassee, which is kind of the nerve center of all things Hurricane Michael disaster recovery. I have a federal counterpart, the Federal Disaster Recovery Coordinator, and what their role is, is to deploy essentially about every federal executive agency that has any dealings with the built environment or with disaster recovery, and even with not disaster recovery, to be co-located with us. So, right now, in our team, we have Housing and Urban Development, US Department of Agriculture, Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Interior, Economic Development Administration, Health and Human Services, and a few others. We have a variety of advisors. There's a team of about fifty people in Tallahassee that are doing this for the disaster. My role is to do the same thing on the state side. So, I've been coordinating with FDOT, DEP, FWC, a lot of other state agencies, to be sure that all the resources across federal government and state government come together in an efficient way that's executable. So, the way that we got involved, a little bit of history with Alligator Point, before the change in the administration in Tallahassee, the deputy director of emergency management asked me to take a field trip down, and it was right around shortly after Thanksgiving, if I recall correctly. We came down and met with Alan and Commissioner Parrish out at Alligator Point and walked the site, and just took a look at everything, and clearly, Alligator Point has a long history of repetitive damage, a high erosion rate, and I'm sure all of you are very familiar with just the history and the current situation there. So, the Division of Emergency Management, who we're under contract with to perform the State Disaster Recovery Coordinator Service, is... They directed us to support the county throughout the entire life cycle and whatever Franklin County needed, helped them get there. So, since then, there's been a change in administration. The new administration has given us the same directive. So, and I know Commissioner Parrish appreciates the comments in the meeting that day, and we look forward to working with the citizens of Alligator Point and Franklin County to help get to hopefully a fix once and for all for Alligator Point and the road there. Commissioner Bolt, we appreciate your involvement as well to date. It's been most helpful to have you engaged in meetings, and we've also been working very closely with the citizens of Alligator Point, attending some of the APTA meetings and so forth, and we'll continue to do that and coordinate with the citizens of Alligator Point to be sure that they're involved in the process. Overall, what our goal is, is to try to identify any resource that's available to help make Alligator Point a better place in terms of avoiding future damage and just to stabilize the area and make it more resilient from an infrastructure and housing standpoint. So, I know we've had a lot of conversations to date with citizens and with county stakeholders and others to help identify some of the history, what's gone on to date, put together the body of knowledge of all the information that's out there. So, any kind of design plan, any kind of decision that's been made, you know, for example, Friday, we met with Department of Environmental Protection senior leadership and just got a download of every permit that DEP's ever dealt with at Alligator Point, things that were historically done and closed out, things that are pending and so forth. So, you know, we look forward to helping navigate that process. We did have a, after the site visit, right around Thanksgiving, shortly thereafter, we came down and had a large meeting there in the real estate office that Alan attended and Commissioner Bolt as well, and brought some of the federal and state partners with us to just allow them to take a look at the site, see what the current situation was and what needed to be done to repair it and make it more resilient long-term. We're looking at a variety of funding sources across federal and state agencies, and we're experts in understanding how those flow of funds work and how you pursue them and secure them. So, I know I had worked with some of you shortly after the East Point fire, and that's very similar to what we did then, only this time, the East Point fire was not a federally declared disaster, so there was no federal resources, very limited federal resources. You know, and we were glad to provide a level of support to move that forward. You know, with Hurricane Michael, of course, there's a lot more federal resources, and as Alan mentioned, FEMA's Public Assistance Program is a very large program that, you know, provides funding for things like Alligator Point. Of course, throughout this process, we're gonna need to work closely with county executive staff as well as elected officials on the decision-making process. It's still county-owned, and we're gonna be working closely with the county throughout the life cycle, as well as the engineer of record, as Alan mentioned. We're gonna have to coordinate with them to help advise them on the critical path forward in terms of designs and next steps and so forth to maintain compliance and maximize the amount of money that we may be able to get for Alligator Point to fix a problem down there. So, I'll pause for any questions before running through kind of actions to date in a little more detail and anything else. Any questions at this time?
Yes. So, this time, you have a contract with the state of Florida for three years, correct?
That's correct. So, our contract with the state of Florida is with the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and it extends through 2021. So, right now, we've been given the directive by state leadership to continue to move forward, and I know some elected officials at the state have also reached out to us wanting updates and so forth, so we just, you know, we'll continue to engage any stakeholder to share information with our progress, but yes, currently, we're under contract through 2021.
So, we better have... I mean, I don't say this is a threat, but if we don't have this thing designed and underway in three years, then, well, I'm gonna leave town, and you might as well too.
Absolutely. I mean, I know the timeline's one of the most challenging things, and part of that is gonna be driven by the availability of funds through some of the programs that may be able to help the situation. And then, of course, there's another thing that really impacts timing, is just the regulatory environment, and I know there's a lot of history with permits and regulations and environmental assessments and so forth that have really slowed down the pace of progress, which really is the trigger for that repetitive damage. You almost get there, then another storm hits, and then you take three steps back. So, what we've been doing is working hard to try to streamline process across the inter-agency recovery coordination group, which is the name of the body that I'm co-leading, and working to identify ways to streamline environmental reviews and working with our federal partners on the federal regulatory side where a lot of money will hopefully flow through. So, we go ahead and get those pre-approvals to the extent we can or identify any obstacles early in the process, and then on the state side, doing the same thing. So, our meeting with Environmental Protection on Friday was literally just to say, what's happened out there? What are the priorities of this agency? What are obstacles and roadblocks that you see? Let's start to break those down now. So, by the time funding comes available and the county's able to go into procurement process to hire a contractor to start the work, all that stuff's already dealt with to the extent that it can be.
And did you get any feel from the state whether they are supportive of the idea of the road relocated back, or they want us to keep building on the beach?
No, my gut feel was that they really liked the idea. We let them know...
So, they'll help us hopefully get permits pushed through then?
I would hope so. I mean, it's definitely the best option, in my opinion, is to try to set the road back some and then also put together some redundant resiliency options, so maybe some offshore living shoreline, additional dune restoration. I know we've been working with Army Corps of Engineers partners to have some site inspections done to see about beach renourishment and restoration. We discussed that with DEP on Friday briefly as well. They brought that up as part of the conversation. So, really, just looking at a holistic and comprehensive approach. I know a part of it as well is voluntary property acquisitions. There's programs at the state and federal level that help with that, and some of that would need to occur in order to relocate the road, to realign it, to set it back and, you know, and then harden the road through that process as well.
Well, sir...
Yes, sir.
I'm a commissioner. I don't know what y'all do. I mean, y'all are experts, but I've been here a while, and the only thing I'd like to see is a good fix, not a quick fix, but you know, something that... You can't beat Mother Nature on nothing you do. I don't care who it is, but you see the situation we're in now, and it's been like that over the last several storms, and you know, before we can get something done, another come, tear it up worse, and worse, and worse. But hopefully, y'all can get together and find out something to get us situated where we can have... I'm not gonna send no permanent pick, 'cause that's a beach out there, but have something better than what... Maybe last longer than the one storm, hopefully.
Yes, sir. I mean, with that being the only ingress and egress for Alligator Point residents, it's absolutely critical to rebuild that stronger than it was before. And once again, we're looking at every option available using best management practices, bringing all the expertise across federal partners, state partners, private sector partners, et cetera, to be sure that all the best practices are brought to bear and considered, so it's a comprehensive and total solution. Once again, with an eye toward resiliency and hazard mitigation to avoid that repetitive damage moving forward. And there's a lot of programs at the federal level that promote hazard mitigation and resilience. I know in the public assistance program, there's a portion of it known as 406 mitigation to build the road back stronger, and then we're also pursuing Section 428, which would allow the county to then use funds to help relocate the road, and trying to combine that with the voluntary property acquisitions to actually have the right-of-way to be able to do that. So, there's a lot of, you know, funding sources, there's a lot of different projects that have been discussed as kind of the conceptual plan, and then, of course, working directly with the residents to be sure that their voices are heard and that they're involved in the process is critical as well. And as that continues, sir, we'll be, you know, I'm sure I'll be back up behind the podium as things continue to evolve and mature over the course of the next few months to be able to present that progress, and then, of course, we plan to stay engaged with APTA, the Neighborhood Association, and attend their meetings. I know we provide them regular updates that hopefully they'll start posting on their website very soon, just so the citizens have updates on progress and can see things happening as it moves through.
Well, we... I will be depending on you.
I'll be happy to give you one of my business cards afterwards, so call anytime. Yes, sir.
I got one quick comment. Mr. Chairman, we do appreciate Frank, and we definitely appreciate the state hiring Frank to come in and help us. As he mentioned before, me and Alan met down there with him on two different occasions, and on the last occasion, I said, "Look, you guys are gonna have to help us." All these different pots of money that Frank's referencing this morning, I don't know nothing about that and don't know how to access that. As a state hired contractor, and he has the expertise to access these different pots of money to try to make a better solution to the road than what we've had in the past, so I'm very encouraged that we'll get to where we need to be with his expertise, giving the county the help that we need to access the funds, or the resiliency funds, and all the different pots he's talking about that I can't even call out now, unless I have any prior knowledge of. So, that's the whole point of having Frank and welcoming him to our team, is to bring that expertise to us to try to find a good solution for that road down there, and I agree with Frank, and we talked about this when we met, was moving the road away from the beach. It's not going to survive down there right on the open Gulf of Mexico. You can leave there and go to Cuba. I mean, there are no barrier islands protecting the road, so there's a lot of things we need to do, and I'll cut that out while Frank can make his presentation, but we do welcome your board, and we do appreciate the state of Florida hiring you to help us reach this ultimate goal.
Thank you, sir, and I appreciate those comments, Commissioner Parrish, and want to reiterate as well that, you know, we're helping the entire declared area, but having increased focus in Franklin County due to some of the meetings and requests by the county, so we appreciate it. To walk through the presentation very quickly, and I'll try to keep my comments short so it'll allow any question and answer as well as any citizen response. Actions to date, of course, we've gone out, done site visits and data gathering and so forth, and just kind of characterizing the situation, the history of the situation, et cetera, to start to pursue some of the funds that'll be coming available in the near future or that already are available. Of course, I mentioned the stakeholder and partner engagement. Once again, we're happy to continue to present at commission meetings. We will continue to work with neighborhood associations and other stakeholders, and Alan has been our primary point of contact. We're gonna continue to go through him for official decisions, et cetera, and in addition to presenting to the board. We will be... We've kind of talked about a preliminary conceptual plan, which is really through all the data gathering and conversations with stakeholders. There's just a lot of ideas of what people believe would be a good solution, and we want to consider all that, in addition to the best management practices and other areas in the nation that have been in a similar situation and have taken an innovative approach to fix it once and for all, and absolutely, that's what we want to do. So, what we're doing is just laying all that out and comparing that to the funding that may be available, and we're just gonna put together the strategy once again to take all those needs and align them with the appropriate resources over the period of time. So, identification of funding sources is one of the things we have expertise in and, you know, that the state is definitely focused on after Hurricane Michael, making Florida more resilient, stronger, better place to live, work, and play overall, to be sure that there's better continuity with the community post-disaster moving forward. So, I know that's a big objective with the direction that we've been given, is all the work we're doing for Hurricane Michael, be sure we're pursuing funding and helping communities to build back stronger, and that's something that's definitely very noble, and Florida has a very good success rate in doing that. I mentioned regulatory and permitting requirements. We're just meeting with all the necessary regulators, both at the state and federal level, to identify any challenges now before we get to the stage of getting funding or applying for funding, et cetera. Next slide, please. So, I know we did talk about the road recovery with some of the emergency repairs, and that's what Alan was referencing. Happy to report that the FEMA site visit will occur Monday, so there will be a team of site inspectors by FEMA out there, and that's the first step of the process for FEMA to go out and assess the damage formally. So, they'll go out and write descriptions and dimensions of the damage, take measurements, photos, and so forth, and that's the first step of the process for FEMA to start writing that first project worksheet to help ensure that the road's stabilized, and Alan mentioned they've been working with the engineer of record on the scoping of that project and so forth.
And you want us there on Monday? You want the county and the engineers there Monday?
That... I was gonna follow up with you after this meeting and be sure, but yeah, that would definitely be good. Appreciate that, Alan. The permanent improvements, once again, the public assistance program from FEMA is gonna be the probably likely funding program for the permanent improvements to the roadway, and once again, we're exploring options to be able to use that pot of money to help relocate the road. Property acquisitions, I mentioned that. Prior to our involvement, the county had sent out letters to gauge interest by residents on Alligator Point of who may be interested in having their home bought out for a pre-event fair market value. We have expertise in those programs as well, and there was a good bit of response by the residents out there. Some were just curious on how the program worked, and others said, you know, "Our home has been significantly damaged, and we'd be happy to take the pre-event fair market value." Of course, that would be a project that we would work closely with the county on because similar to some of the other acquisitions, the old KOA campground, for example, exact same process. It's just gonna be continuing to acquire property to be sure that the road realignment would be an option, and of course, you know, we presented some of those ideas to neighborhood association meetings and so forth, and stayed after it, answered questions. So, we'll continue to explore that as a potential option. Some of the utilities, relocation and hardening, as everyone knows, there's power lines right there along the beach, and then there's also some water mains and so forth that were damaged, and some of that's been decommissioned and others not. As part of the project, we would definitely want to relocate and harden any utilities to the extent we can to be sure that in future storms, you won't have power outages or hopefully a less risk of power outage as well as interruptions to the water supply out there. So, we're definitely looking at that as part of the comprehensive approach. And then, the beach and coastal restoration, we are aware of some of the sea turtle nesting concentration and the critical importance that Alligator Point has. As I mentioned, trying to coordinate with as many stakeholders as possible. We've met with the Nature Conservancy, who of course owns the Phipps property there at the end of the point, just to gauge their level of interest to engage, and we're looking at, you know, from a natural and cultural resource standpoint, we had Department of Interior representatives and, of course, you know, brought that up with Environmental Protection and others to just ensure that as restoration occurs out there, we're just doing it in a, you know, an efficient and compliant manner. But absolutely want to explore the beach and coastal restoration as part of the project, and once again, another step with that redundant resiliency. If you have a restored dune system out there plus an offshore living reef or something like that, it's going to help, you know, with future erosion and maybe explore planting seagrasses and things like that. So, just some of the natural barriers and vegetation can also serve as a good mitigation measure against coastal storm surge and other coastal impacts. So, once again, just trying to be as comprehensive as possible.
Frank, you had mentioned something holistically relative to beach renourishment, where we are focusing on the disaster area we're talking about, but you had also, I think in a previous conversation, mentioned that maybe we're looking at an entire peninsula of beach renourishment relative to the Corps of Engineers and looking at the big picture as well as a way of preserving this problem.
Absolutely, Commissioner Bolton. I appreciate that comment because while we're engaged for the Alligator Point damage, if along the way, we find solutions that are gonna provide a secondary or tertiary benefit to the entire point or the county as a whole, we're absolutely gonna propose that and explain the process on how that would work through some of these programs. So, it wouldn't make sense, of course, if, you know, if you just had a half-mile stretch and you fix that, the next half-mile that's adjacent to that five years from now is gonna be in the same situation. So, just taking a look at the entire system and what we can do is absolutely the focus, so appreciate that comment. So, some of the funding sources, I know not to get into too much detail, but of course, public assistance program, some of the federal and state mitigation programs, there are eligible project types that would be appropriate and applicable for the Alligator Point proposed solution, whatever ultimately that becomes through the recovery planning process. USDA's World Development Programs, there may be some opportunities there. I know that there was discussion about the damaged fire station that was there and some donated land and changes around that potentially, so USDA's World Development Programs may be able to help provide funding to help restore those or help that recover or relocate to make it a more hardened structure and be sure that there's not that impact to the continuity of fire service on the point, while still understanding that the proximity of a fire station to a residential property is gonna have an impact on insurance premiums, et cetera. So, we're keeping all those things in mind as well to be sure throughout this process, we're working hard to keep the financial burden as low as possible on both the jurisdiction as well as the citizens of Alligator Point. So, once again, just trying to bring as much expertise to bear as possible. Department of Interior, of course, says US Fish and Wildlife is part of the Department of Interior, and we, you know, intend to continue to coordinate with them, and also NOAA, some of the others that are out there, federal agencies that may have an interest. Florida has a coastal resilience program out of environmental protection. There's C grant monies and a wide variety of other... Through the disaster supplemental request, we were helped to support some of that that went up, that has been approved by Congress. I think they're reconciling differences and just waiting on final execution, but there may be additional funding coming through disaster supplemental requests through some of these executive agencies, and we're working just to be sure that folks understand the need and, you know, once again, taking that comprehensive and coordinated approach. HUD is also another big funder, and then, you know, at some point, there likely will be a need for local match of some sort, which is standard with a lot of the cost-sharing federal grants, and about every federal grant has a cost-sharing component, but once again, we can bring expertise to the table to be sure that we keep that financial burden as low as possible. So, as those critical decision points come up, we will absolutely continue to keep both elected and executive officials in Franklin County well-informed of those decisions and answer any questions associated with that.
Sir...
Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Have you all ever... I mean, it's just me saying, it's just my opinion, one man opinion. Have you ever thought about a bridge, and how much would that cost?
Yes, sir. So, that's a good question, and the bridge option has came up through some of the data[1757.52] collection and, you know, historical knowledge that we've tried to collect and assemble. Folks have, there are some folks that believe let nature run its course, and the Gulf is just trying to connect back with the bay ultimately, and that a bridge may be a possible option. So it is something that's been discussed, and once again, at this point, sir, we're just working through the conceptual plan of the scoping. On that point, we are working to try to get some expertise through some of the federal partners as well as private sector partners, folks that are experts in coastal hydrology and erosion and things like that, to really help characterize that situation and answer that question better.
Have you ever thought about dredging that dirt back up?
That has been a consideration, and I know Alan mentioned there's existing permits that are still active for beach re-nourishment, which would entail some sort of dredging. So we're considering that as well, yes, as part of the beach re-nourishment and reconstruction and maybe even looking at an engineered beach of some type or something like that. I mean, all those considerations are still on the table.
If you look at the map offshore of Alligator Point, about 125 yards, there's a channel that used to run from Dewey's Channel to Mud Cove. It was a channel through there, an open channel where they could run, keep them going across around the reef. You could run through that channel.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm asking, the sand source, if there was a beach re-nourishment program, the sand source is right there. It's the various, what you're talking about. And we have, through our last effort, kept the permit open to use that sand source, but I will tell you that there's no point in pumping sand up on a beach unless there's some way to maintain it on the beach, and that is the, has been the sticking point in the past.
I'm just saying, there used to be a channel offshore, and it was an open channel the boats used.
Oh, yeah, we know that saying from the Alligator Point went somewhere, and it went and filled that channel is what happened.
Yeah, the channel, because a lot of people don't know that channel was there. It ran all the way from Mud, all the way to the Mud Cove.
Well, there's plenty of sand out there, but again, there's no point in even talking about it unless we have a complete picture on how beaches work, and beaches don't stay there, you got to keep putting them back, and there has to be some obligation from somebody to pay to have it put back regularly, and that's the challenge.
And once again, I appreciate that point, Alan. We're working to identify all those obstacles, and we're just going to have to look at the pros and cons of every potential solution and get as many of them pulled together in a meaningful and efficient way as we can. So I'm not going to be able to work out everything, of course, but we're going to give everything a fair shot in full due diligence to be sure that any option has been fully vetted and that we've compared it with a critical path for success and completion, understanding some of the restrictions of the funding programs that are.
I know, they ain't going to let you grab, like Mr. Noah said, a bridge is probably the best solution.
We appreciate that, that comment, and definitely will continue to take that into advisement.
Frank.
Yes, sir.
The first word in your title here is called funding. The history of this impaired road is, probably goes back in this county at least 30 years. As you know, it's been a financial burden forever for us. Two points to my question. One is, as you begin to stabilize the emergency situation, and we're saying stabilize with whatever product that may be, berm, et cetera, can you predict that there'll be a time where our road department is not burdened with the financial repair of that road and in the emergency situation, it stops at some point, the hemorrhaging essentially stops? Can you see that happening for us?
It's my understanding that the Department of Transportation is unable to bring that road back onto the state system.
I knew that, yeah. We don't expect that. But we're wondering about, once you get this temporary fix stabilized, I'm wanting our county to save some money here because we're just bleeding.
Commissioner, I mean, I'll jump in it because he can't really answer that question because what it depends on is how much sand we can put out there in a sand berm and how long it stays there.
Yes, that's right.
I mean, if we have a coal mine come through and wash it away.
At some point, yeah. Okay, at least the intention is. And then I also wanted, on behalf of our financial staff, that if we're going to be thinking about matching funds, can you give us as much as possible, not now, but as you see it, a long-range prediction about potential that we need to match so we can be prepared to be thinking about that?
Absolutely. So what we've done in the past, Commissioner Bolden, is just align that with the capital improvements program to be sure that there's budgeting and funding into the future. As Alan mentioned, you know, we would hope to have designs done and groundbreaking done, you know, within the next couple of years, but there would definitely be some lead time on that. And as grants are pursued and applications are submitted, those applications and grants are going to have to be approved by the board, and all that information will be contained in that. And then we'll be happy to explain how each of those funding sources are leveraged with one another, how that timing works, what it takes for compliance, et cetera. So all of that information will be available well prior to any required expenditure by the county.
This is very subjective and potentially an emotional issue on my part, but this county has again, once again, been a great caretaker of that road in many ways. A lot of criticism about it, but at least we're here and involved and connected. And for whatever subjective that may be worth, I'd like that sponsored on behalf of all these funding sources to know how hard we have tried to keep this thing going.
Absolutely, Commissioner. I appreciate that comment as well. So as part of the data collection process, one of the things we did is got with Alan and characterized all those expenditures historically, just from a cash basis of what the county has put in, and, you know, wanted to tell that story, and not just tell the story, but see if there's any opportunity there to have that recognized as a match for some of these grants and so forth. And once again, just trying to bring every strategy to bear we can to keep that financial burden as low as possible. Next slide, please. So we mentioned that the site inspection is Monday to start the emergency repair process, whether it be a sand berm or whatever design ultimately would be reviewed and approved by FEMA. I did want to clarify that, you know, we will be helping to support the county through the public assistance process for Alligator Point. However, we or the county would not be writing a PW. FEMA writes the PWs, we just provide the information. So what we're going to do is start working hard to get what's known as essential elements of information, or EEI. FEMA has to have all that data and information to be able to formulate and obligate or otherwise fund a project worksheet. And the project worksheet is the actual grant that identifies the scope, the schedule, and the budget of what FEMA would pay for and any cost share associated with local match to be able to complete the project. So we'll be supporting Alan and the engineer of record through that process.
Frank, while you're thinking of cost share, so has there been any effort by the government, as you know, by the governor's office to provide a waiver for Hurricane Michael? Where do we stand on the waiver? For not only Frank, but every county?
Yeah, and that's one thing. So waivers have to be specifically requested through the Office of Policy and Budget, which is part of the governor's office. We can absolutely talk about that and help the county understand the process, but it's my understanding that the county is required to take action to request that waiver. I do know on the debris side, with DOT assuming the responsibility of debris, part of that was through kind of a waiver mindset where, you know, rather than having fiscally constrained counties front all that money and wait for reimbursement, the state just said, we'll take on that responsibility. So I would imagine that there would be, you know, at least an opportunity to apply for that, and we're happy to help coordinate that.
If you look into that, because we actually, the clerk's office, we, on behalf of the FAC, requested all the counties submit some data that was very similar to what's needed in a waiver request, and the clerk's office put that together, and we sent it up to, I think it ended up going to the governor's office. I can't remember who the letter was addressed to, might have been our representative. But anyway, we prepared that, never heard a response back. I will say, the last time we got a waiver, it took months, I mean, months to get any response out of the governor's office. Six, eight months, it was a long time.
Yeah, and at this point, of course, I'm not in a position to speak formally on behalf of the state from that perspective, but once again, we're happy to help you guys understand the process and then follow up and, you know, make calls or coordinate however we can. So we're definitely happy to do that. Once again, just continuing to put together the conceptual scope of work, and then ultimately there would need to be formal designs that would be applicable for pulling permits and getting permits approved, as well as procurements for contractors. And we'll be working closely with Alan and the county's engineer of record on that to be sure that the strategy, once again, is efficient, comprehensive, and compliant with all the funding sources. And then just regularly reporting progress. So next slide, please. So there is our contact information. We did set up an email account specifically for the project for citizens to use, and, you know, folks are actively using that, we monitor it. I did want to introduce Sarah Kelty as well, and Sarah, would you like to say a few words? She is our project manager for the project, so she will be the central point of coordination, and then we also have other members of our team dedicated to Alligator Point. But once again, there's our contact information, and then that phone number is a phone number specifically for Alligator Point, that somebody mans a phone at all times on that number. So that way citizens have an open channel. I did get some feedback today where some of the citizens didn't have the information, so we're working hard to correct that, and we'll be staying after the meeting today to resolve that. So thank you once again for your time, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Sarah Kelty, as Frank mentioned, the project manager. And I think Frank covered most of it, but again, we're happy to pass out our business cards afterwards for those who want it. Also, wanted to thank our partners at the state and federal agencies for being here as well and attending this meeting with us. And yeah, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
We appreciate y'all helping us out. Like we said, y'all the experts, so we just going to sit back and watch y'all do your thing.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I don't want to overdramatize this, but I do want the public to know that today is really a defining moment in the history of Franklin County, and specifically, it's a very defining moment in the history of Alligator Point. We've been dealing with this road issue for well over 30 years, and now I want the public to know, and our commissioners, of course, we know, that we have traction. We have disaster recovery-specific sponsorship sponsored by the governor's office and with defined goals and plans. So now I believe the citizens at least can take a breath and relax a little bit, but stay alert. We have control, and we're on our way for a good recovery. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks, everyone, once again.
I just want to ask one question.
Yes.
What's been the response about the acquisition of the project?
So we're still working through that process, but it's entirely voluntary. No one has to sell whatsoever, and I would say some have been positive, others just have been inquisitive. But as far as I understand, we haven't had any kind of, you know, major pushback, and we've just been providing information to citizens on how the process works, and then it's up to them and their decision on how they'd like to move forward. But once again, there's no, you know, requirement for them to do that, and even if some of the federal grant programs that come in, actually unable to use them in a domain and things like that for acquisition in some circumstances. So, yeah, it would be a totally voluntary process by a resident.
You're welcome. Mr. Paperman, you know how to, you had to come in front of that podium and give your name for the record.
David Adlerstein with the Appalachian Times. I just asked that question.
Thank you, sir. So, y'all do. And like I said, we appreciate y'all coming down and whatever y'all can do. We got some good people out in Alligator Point, but, you know, anybody get upset when you can't get home. That go for me. I get upset if I can't get on Main Street. I know that. So help them out, see what you can do. Thank you.
I was getting ready to go, continue on, but I realized it's not my time, so.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be the TDC, Mr. John Solomon, Administrator's Report.
Morning, Commissioners. John Solomon, TDC Director. I submitted the report. Collections report in October, collections were $38,426.89. This amount was based on approximately eight days of collection in October during, due to Hurricane Michael. In addition, we also have the November collections report came in first of last week, or the end of last week. The reported collections were $87,784.31. This is an increase of 83.3% above last year's $49,440 that was collected in November of 2017.
That's good. That's real good.
Very good numbers, and also got very good numbers reporting from the businesses of December and January as well. So if the accommodations reflect that, we should see that number be consistent for the next few months. Visitor Center stats in December were 1,723 visitors to the four visitor centers in Franklin County. The final year total was 31,398 visitors to the visitor centers, and again, this is with October being pretty much a wash for the visitor centers, so very good numbers there. Website activity is another positive. We had 30,331 web hits in the month of December, which is 9,755 more than the same time period in 2017. And the total website activity for the 2018 calendar year is 366,336, which is up 142,802 from the previous year's numbers. Financials, the TDC board approved the following expenditures at the January 9th regular meeting. $500 for new signs at both the Carabelle and East Point visitor centers. $1,487.99 for a new canopy tent that will have full-color images of the TDC logo, TDC website, and the tent will be used to advertise Franklin County as well as out-of-county events. This will be at the events that we, the TDC and the county sponsor and promote and other events throughout, that we'll actually have a presence at these events with this tent, with our personnel handing out brochures and things like that to explore other parts of our county. I actually got the number for that, it's actually about $10 less than that when I got the final invoice earlier today. Up to $4,500 for a storage shed. The total amount will include the shed, a small window air conditioning unit, and a power hookup. This storage unit will be located at the TDC East Point Visitor Center office and will be eliminate $113.33 monthly rent paid for a very small storage space at the old Appalachian High School. The shed will also be used to store visitor guides, maps, and other TDC items. Currently, we have about an eight-by-15 corridor at the Appalachian High School that we're paying that amount for, and with the new guides coming in in the next month or so, they will fill it up considerably, and there won't be any room in that at all, which would cause us to spend more money on rental space from there. And this is a more centrally-located area for the east and the west side of the counties to be able to get their brochures. Also, they approved up to $500 for a desk at the TDC office. This will replace the current desk that is owned by the former administrator, Mr. Kirk Blair. And actually, they approved up to 500, but I purchased a desk on Friday of last week, and it was $284, so that would be the total price for the desk. The final two mentions, the shed and the desk will be out of the maintenance fund for the TDC office visitor center that we have there. The next meetings will be February 13th at 2:00 PM at the TDC office, and then on March 13th, we have an organizational meeting scheduled for 1:00 PM, and that'll be followed by the scheduled board meeting at 2:00 PM.
John, that shed you're going to get, are you, is that going to be strapped down in a way that it'll be wind resistant?
Yes, sir, that'll be secured way. That's one of the things that we're working on still. That hasn't been ordered because of that exact reason. We're trying to find a way that that can be there to withstand wind.
I just want to say a couple of things as you guys, we're both kind of new at this, John and I both, so I think we're going to learn a lot of things together. I wanted to make sure that you brought all those things up today because I wanted to make sure this board was aware, actions that the TDC boards take in and make sure that it's just open and everybody knows what's going on. All these things are things that are in their budgets to, of money, pot of monies to be used. And I can say, you know, the first month has been bumpy, but we're going to make it, we're going to make it together. And I thank John and everybody at that board. I can tell you from having just only had two meetings with them, I don't see us having any issues as a whole, you know, as long as we adhere to what we're doing and we keep it to TDC and keep it right, we should be good. And I just wanted to say that one, John, as you.
Anybody else have anything for? But looking, it comes to my attention, I think they need to, Mr. Shule, might need to look over y'all contract and y'all redo it to set it, to set it up where your money is beginning there every month like it's supposed to be. Y'all do things different from the way Kirk was doing it, right?
Yes, sir.
So I need a, I guess a motion so they can look into that and redo that contract, amend the contract.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I need to understand what you mean by amend it because that contract was presented off-island. It was presented to the TDC by Alan who negotiated all of that. I just don't know what your, what do you want to renegotiate? Everybody's already signed.
I mean, it's not, I'm not, we're not changing no monies or nothing. It's just... Just that they, they get some of their money, they ain't getting their money on, like they wanted on time. I mean, some of the hours don't be, they doing there on the island thing, and it, if they wouldn't be...
But that was in the contract that everybody saw and approved. Yeah, I don't know. I don't think Mr. Schuler wanted to be involved in it. He wasn't involved in it, but Alan negotiated with their attorney. And I don't know if Alan wants to speak to that or not, but...
I mean, you know, certainly, Commissioner, this is a contract for you all. I did it as a non-attorney, and I'm really not in the position of drafting contracts. That's not what I was trained to do. So, I took the existing contract that Kurt Blair, or whatever his company was called, had, and made some slight modifications to it. But I didn't, I didn't change the structure of it nor the compensation, except for one in one aspect. I mean, he's saying now that he's doing it differently. Well, if it's done differently, then some of them may, maybe they need to be reviewed. But, but I, I don't want to be in the middle of that, because this is not, I'm not a, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't draft contracts. But I did what I thought I was told, directed by the board to do, was get a contract between the county and the Chamber of Commerce. And so, that's why I provided with minimum change from the structure that was already existence. Again, because I'm not an attorney, and I shouldn't be drafting contracts to that extent.
What's the issue, John?
Oh, the issue is that the time that billed, there were before, was, it was Kurt and his administration. So, anything that he was directing the administration of the office to do was covered under the same hourly basis, where the new contract for us is not. It does not, it separates that.
There is a separation. And I, and I did that specifically, because I thought I was trying to be fair to how the world operated. But admittedly, the first contract, I didn't realize under Kurt's contract that there were two employees, Kurt and somebody named Deb, were being billed at a one rate. I just thought that with all the staff that you all have in the secretarial assistant position, I did put in a lesser amount for assistants and secretaries. And I think that's how I described it, so that the director, salary, hour rate was forty-two dollars an hour, and I cut that in half to a twenty-one dollar an hour rate, I believe is what I put in the contract. But I, in what I wrote, I did not know that there were more than one person. I just thought it was Kurt. I was not aware there was a second person, or maybe a third or fourth person, at whatever billing rate. So, I didn't, I didn't define who got what hourly rate. You know, I described them as assistants, you know, at twenty-one dollars an hour, but I didn't know who those were. I didn't name names. I didn't know.
But that was pointed out by you when you worked on the contract. I don't think any of my secretaries are getting forty-two dollars an hour. I don't think anybody at work for the counties getting forty-two dollars an hour.
Well, what it is, is the contract read, they, they said they doing a job on the yearly base, nine percent or whatever I was told, and what we've been doing it by. I mean, you know, you go by the yearly base. They said the contract was a hundred and what?
Yeah. The amount of money that was available to the previous people was still available. This year is, this year was reduced because you all awarded or asked Mr. Blair to stay for three months. So, therefore, the hundred and fourteen thousand dollars or whatever the amount was, was cut by a quarter, because he got a quarter of the year. So, yeah, this year's, I think it's eighty-four thousand dollars available for TDC administration. Now, how that is used is really up to them. But that's the amount for this year. But next year, it goes to the full hundred and fourteen thousand.
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve, whatever the number is.
It's a hundred and twelve, but...
One of the issues, I just get into that, is that you need, you know, the money is there if you, the money is there for administrative costs if, in fact, you accrue those kind of costs. If you don't need a hundred and twelve thousand dollars worth of administrative money, admittedly, it doesn't have to spend on admin. It could go to programs. I mean, it's all TDC money. And it's not, it's not county's money, it's the TDC's money. So, as far as I'm concerned, I'll be honest with you, and I shouldn't probably say this, the decision about how the breakdown should be is between the TDC board and their administrator. I mean, that's, that's, that's who should be negotiating. It's not me. I don't, I don't care how much money admin goes, but the TDC board might care. I mean, it's their, it's their money, really.
But they agreed to this split of the money. They signed that contract.
The TDC...
The TDC, that's their president, signed off on the contract. She knew what was in the contract.
No, you aren't, I'm sorry, the Chamber of Commerce signed off, the TDC didn't. The TDC board didn't.
The Chamber, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the Chamber, you're right. The Chamber did.
I'm sorry. They signed off on the agreement. Dawn Duncan signed. She's their...
So, how do you bill, John?
Currently, what I was advised is different than what it is. Currently, what we have to do is put our hours that we worked in for the month to finance, and then they pay to that structure. What, it fails to be even Kurt with his billing the last ten years, would never have been able to reach the amount of money he did. And he even had extra contracts to pay for other employees that we're not requesting at all. But again, in this whole process, like Mr. Pierce said, this covered the cost of doing business as the TDC. That doesn't cover any bills. That doesn't cover the power bill, the water bill, anything extra to that effect in that contract. So, and, I mean, if it's covering costs of doing business excluding that, and also, no other vendors also have to put in hours for their time. Bay Media, Forgotten Coast TV, Two K Web Group, they're contracted is actually, they have a set amount that they get that contract for. And then, anything else they do over that contract, they bill for and get reimbursed. But those others, they're actually contracted.
So, you don't do the same thing?
No, that ours is hourly. We have to put in hours of staff and self.
That's how it was in the one that I, that I modeled after. I mean, that's Kurt did hourly also.
I have a question. Mr. Jones?
Yep.
How do you, as a TDC chairman, how, how do you?
I think we just need to discuss it at the next meeting and try to hash out something to bring back to this board as an advisory opinion of what needs to be done. I think that's what we need to do.
Right, going with what Ms. Clark said, and, you know, and...
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I didn't know this was gonna come up today, so, you know, it is what it is. But I can tell you, the wording of the contract states it's up to a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per fiscal year. We currently have several contracts the TDC has done with vendors. Some are additional contracts that also state up to, and up to means up to. Up to does not mean it's a dedicated, or if it was, that phrase would not be there. That's the way I read it. But we'll, we'll handle it as a TDC board and talk about it. We're all adults, and we'll try to do our thing.
Yeah, get that and fan it out and come back to us and...
I think that's the best, best course of action, I think.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. Because this contract was negotiated by the county commissioner and the Canada Chamber of Commerce, not the TDC board. They didn't have any input. So, I think maybe there's now an opportunity to have them have some input, yeah.
Right.
Okay, well, we just table it, tape that to next.
I make a motion to table it to the next meeting to Commissioner Jones and come back with some information.
Yes, sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner... Motion on the floor by Commissioner Masters, seconded by Commissioner Burton. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, a pass anonymous.
Do I have any more questions for the TDC?
Anybody got anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Okay. Next would be Mr. Alan Pierce.
Well, Mr. Johnson, I think.
I don't have...
I'm Ms. Martha Johnson.
I don't have a report today, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm starting by that, Martha.
The good news is...
Mr. Alan Pierce.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, most of our reports have been done throughout the meeting. So, the bad news is Lori has to figure out when I said what.
It's pretty sneaky.
But anyway, so item number one is all done. Item number two, inform the board that Commissioner Jones and I had a teleconference with the Mobile Office of the U.S. Corps of Engineers on January sixteenth regarding the status of the East Point Channel, the Two Mile Channel dredging project. I'll refer to Commissioner Jones for any comments he would like to make regarding what the Corps said, but both projects are moving forward. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers did confirm they thought it feasible, the East Point Channel dredging would commence this fall. I asked the Corps to try to schedule the project so that the Two Mile Channel is dredged under the same contract with the East Point Channel. They didn't make a response at this time, but they are, but they are aware both need to be done. At this time, there are no congressional funds for the Two Mile Channel, so it will have to be dredged using only consortium funds. But since the county did not know Congress would appropriate two mile, um, two million dollars to the East Point Channel, there should be enough funds between congressional allocation and the consortium to have both channels dredge to their original designs. What still has to be worked out is how the county will make our consortium funds available at the time the Corps needs them. And that, that's what we're waiting back from the Corps. They should be here shortly, Commissioner Jones. I forget the, the thing they, they're gonna be doing, but they will be out in the East Point Channel, we hope soon, making some final Corps borrowings and doing that sort of stuff. So, that, that process is, those projects are moving forward. That's two. Three, we've already done. Four, we've already done. The first five, we've already done. I actually had two fives, so let me do the second five.
Five B.
Five B. Inform the board that I completed a request for qualifications for seeking a restore consultant. The ad will run during February, and the board should be opening RFQs at the March fifth meeting. And this will be to guide you all. Now that we have a lot more experience, and Treasure has a lot more experience, we're gonna have a much more streamlined approach to your restored projects, and I hope that moves forward quickly. All right, that's number five. Number six, inform the board that the sheriff does not think the county ordinance is regulating activities in Larnark Village, provide him and the authority to remove abandoned vehicles along the county roads in Larnark Village. So, I would ask the board to direct the county attorney to investigate and talk to the sheriff and try and resolve. Apparently, he, we, we think he can red-tag vehicles, but apparently, he doesn't think he can red-tag vehicles. So, I don't, I don't quite know what the issue is.
Well, that was my question. Do you, what am I, what question am I being asked to?
Well, I'll defer to Commissioner Bolton's claim of better, but it's basically, there are abandoned vehicles in Larnark Village that are there, and the sheriff says he can't remove them.
And those abandoned vehicles appear to be commonly-used county property as parking places for residents. And I made for you just an example of three trespasses that folks at Larnark Village last night talked about, abandoned vehicles that are not properly licensed, been sitting in these addresses for quite some time. So, I thought you could dissect that out. I believe the, the idea was that the sheriff needs a specific direction on removing these kinds of vehicles relative to county property that's uniquely used by people who also live there. So, something for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Can I ask you a question? Are we talking about vehicles that are parked on the right of way? Are we talking about vehicles that are parked in front of somebody's, want to be a house?
Both, as I understand it, it's both.
Yeah, I think those are two completely different animals.
They normally are, but I, if I understand it right, Larnark Village is a unique situation in some cases where the right of way, starting at the center line of the road and going thirty feet each side.
Well, Larnark is very unusual.
It's also the area where they're parking.
Essentially, there is no, everybody, all the parking is in the right of way, Commissioner Jones. It's jammed in there.
It's just very unique there, apparently.
That's any part, you go any city, whatever, thirty feet from the middle intersection of the road, sixty feet, you parking on the right of way, right?
Well, not necessarily, because some roads are... I would say Larnark Village, I'm not sure they're even sixty feet wide, but anyway. The issue is, are they parking the right of way, or they're parking somewhere else?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I might, your, your current ordinances in Larnark do not regulate the length of time someone can park in a designated parking area. And that's why I was asking you to clarify the question, because my, my understanding is that, that's the issue, is people have been parking certain vehicles along one of the streets. I think it's Heffernan over in Larnark Village, and the vehicles have been left there for a substantial period of time in excess of six months.
The question is, does that vehicle have a valid tag? Because if it doesn't, then it's an abandoned vehicle.
Right. Well, current county ordinances do not address that. State law addresses the abandonment of vehicles within the right of way. So, I think that's probably, that, that is the, the law that we've relied on in the past to remove vehicles from the county right of ways, mainly at Alligator Point, which recently, remember, the semi-truck and the sailboat that were placed in the right of way blocking.
Mr. Schuler, you're, you're correct. In fact, if the issue really isn't that these vehicles, is these vehicles have, have valid tags, and they're just stored there on the county right, we, we do not have any timeline, and the sheriff can't remove them, because as long as they're valid tags, this is valid to park them there for, in perpetuity, if you want to keep replacing the tag. That's correct.
The examples I'm giving, though, apparently don't have a valid tag, and they're deteriorating and vegetation growing up around them, et cetera.
My, my point being, we've always relied on the discretion and training of the sheriff's department to determine when a vehicle should be red-tagged in the right of way and when it should not. But I, I will, if the board by motion in both directions, I will look at that issue and report back with further information.
Now, I'll make a motion to directly attorney to investigate and report back. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, seconded by Commissioner Masters. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A pass anonymous.
Commissioner Bolton, I will be in touch with you, give you some direction and guidance as well.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, item number seven. I have been consulting with Ms. Rhonda Skipper, property appraiser, on the loss of the county tax place related to Hurricane Michael. I confirmed with her on Friday that she and all the affected county property appraisers have been asked by DOR, Department of Revenue, to provide DOR with estimates on property losses. I've attached my report, the letter Ms. Skipper with, has drafted with the amount of property loss she will be turning into DOR. The current estimate is forty-four million dollars. Now, that's market value, not, not tax value, which would be slightly less. It is my suggestion that the county use this, these numbers as a basis for our request to triumph for tax assistance. I have spoken to Triumph staff, and they are verifying what DOR is collecting, as they agree that might be a common starting point for determining how Triumph reimburses all the counties. Triumph is having a special meeting on February eighth in Panama City to discuss tax relief, and I plan to attend. Any commission can go with me if they want to, or if not, does the board have any direction for me to speak, if there's an opportunity? I mean, I, I just want to be there to make sure that we are treated fairly and equitably with the other counties. And right now, there is no guidance from Triumph, so I don't, I, I presume that we'll all be treated fairly, but that's why I'm going to just monitor.
I'll make a motion to Rick. I appear to go to this meeting and speak for the county associates.
I second it.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Paris, seconded by Commissioner Masters. I want to attend that meeting too.
Okay. All right, well, I will get you the time this Friday afternoon.
Let me know as well.
Okay.
Would that motion include getting funding for you to go?
Uh, I don't charge, I don't charge the county.
I do.
I mean, I don't charge my own with that one.
Before we vote, Mr. Chairman, I want to say something. Alan, I know that I can't go, but you or, or the chairman or whoever can speak, I definitely am thankful that somebody's gonna be there to speak on our behalf, should, should the opportunity present itself. I have no reason to feel this, you know, to feel any angst with it, you know, with this Triumph stuff. Until we get money, it's still all up in the air. And there's gonna be a lot of people asking for a lot of things right now with the way this storm goes. So, I'm glad that, Mr. Chairman, you're going, and Alan, you're gonna go, and I'm glad to see the opportunity.
Alan's been aboard ever since it started, so he needs to stay in contact with it, because he, he knows everything that's going on.
That's right.
Yeah, I ain't got no problem with that.
No, no, I'm just saying, no, I'm just saying, Alan needs to...
Yeah, I think Chairman, if Chairman can go, he ought to go.
Yes, sir. Chairman has to go.
No, I ain't trying to go in your place. I just want to go to...
Oh, absolutely. No, 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 no.
I'm trying to start to see what's going on.
All right, well, I'll give you the after meeting and tell you the time. Are we done?
We need to vote?
Oh, sorry, after vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass.
Okay, we're done eight already. Last, my last item, thank goodness, uh, for everybody. Inform the board, I'm working on a pre-application of Triumph funding for a new fuel delivery system at the airport. As the board may recall, our airport was the only airport able to deliver fuel during the hurricane recovery for an area between Tallahassee and Pensacola. The airport drew rave reviews for its role, but one of the weaknesses that could have caused the problem was our very old fuel farm. Fortunately, Centric did a great job of holding everything together, but now is the time to get some assistance to replace what is an aging fuel delivery system. Uh, we'll be, and it's, these numbers I, uh, come to you, uh, from consulting with Centric and with, uh, our engineers out there. So we have an idea what we're asking for. We will be seeking some nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars of Triumph funds for the match of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from DOT for the backup generator that would work for the fuel farm and a match of some Centric's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is the value of their fuel trucks. The Triumph Board seems eager to provide assistance to the airport since it played a key role in the regions of hurricane recovery. And since I can now list matches for Triumph funds, now is the time to apply. So the total of the project would be one point one nine zero million dollars with nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars of Triumph funds and two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of non-Tryump funds. The non-Tryump funds represents twenty-two point seven percent of the project, which I think is a good enough match for Triumph to support the project. The next regularly scheduled Triumph meeting has not been announced, but if the board wants to authorize this pre-application submission now, then I'll get it in as soon as I get some additional confirmation from DOT and other people regarding some details.
And you're saying that this is a wash, the county will not have spent any money if we get these matching funds as well?
That's correct. You'll get a new fuel system at the airport at no cost to the county.
Okay.
Of the dollars.
So moved.
Sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass it anonymous.
Okay, that's in my report.
I have something for Alan, please.
Yes, sir.
Alan, if, I want you to, to, if the board to go with me to write a letter to the commission FWC to see if they can put hunting season start hours with everybody else's at the same time.
Okay.
Because we have so many hunters in here, they're two weeks and they close in South Florida. They come up here and they can't hunt. And as well as said, they shot a duck out of the city pond too, of one of our little tame ducks in during this time. They rested the guy who shot the duck. They went into closed area behind Larnark Village and shot a bunch of deer, tame deer in there. And the boys can't even deer hunt. And, and another issue is with our oyster bar. When, and if it does, I rope them back up. I'd like for just the county people on Franklin County to be able to oyster there, because our boys went down south, they burned them out, they stole their boats, they cut their tires. And we are not allowed down there, but when we open up, they can all just come and do what they want on our oyster bars.
If I could have Michael Marone write that letter, I'd love to run that one.
Well, one of y'all write it, I mean.
He's a county coordinator.
Okay, I didn't, one of y'all write it. I mean, if the board will go along with me on that, because all the hunters, I think contacted Ricky as well.
Yep.
It's, it's, it's a problem.
I was in a boat.
I made a motion to.
I second that motion to write the letter and ask them, ask them what we can do to see about making our hunting season consistent with everyone else's through the state. That's what my motion would be.
I got a motion.
Or second.
And the, and the oyster bar?
Yeah, and the oyster bar, I'm with that, because we can't even go down and oyster.
I don't know that we have any way to. I mean, you can ask, but I, you're probably.
Their county commissioners down there, if you seen it on the news, the other night said they was gonna be staying behind their oysters. They didn't want nobody from Franklin County down there oystering. It was on the, on the news the other night.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones, any more discussion on it? Well, we gonna stand by ours, we don't want them in here, man.
Yeah, I mean, they, they burn them out.
They started the game, we can play it too.
They draw first blood.
Don't be left up to the state.
Well, no, I mean, we can still set some type of rule.
Yeah.
If you come there oystering, you're not, I, I'm not from this county, you can't catch it, so many bags not being from this county or something.
They don't have no enforcement.
All in favor? We done voted it.
Not, what happened?
Not yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it anonymous.
All right. Good.
Next on the agenda will be Mr.
Still morning. I'll try and get you out of here at lunch.
Mr. Marone, county coordinator.
That'd be me, sir. At your December eighteenth meeting, uh, the board directed me to contact the city of Appalachia Cola regarding their interest in submitting a candidate to serve as the county's municipal representative on the Appalachia Regional Planning Council. The, this board attempts to rotate that seat every year between both cities. I sent an email to Appalachia Cola city manager, as well as followed up with a call. And as yesterday, the city of Appalachia, Appalachia Cola hasn't responded or shown any interest in serving. Ms. Brennan LaPaz, Carabelle's mayor, would like to continue serving as she recognizes the value of that seat for the city of Carabelle. Board action to appoint Mayor LaPaz as the city's municipal representative on the Appalachia Regional Planning Council for another year.
I make a motion to keep her on there.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it anonymous.
At your January fifteenth meeting, I informed the board that the county received the twenty nineteen legislative budget request forms from Senator Monford's office. Senator Monford requested that the forms are submitted to his office no later than Monday, February eleventh. And I quote from his request, county and city governments combine and rank each budget request in one priority order. At the unofficial legislative delegation meeting, which was held on Wednesday, January thirtieth, I discovered that the city of Appalachia Cola planned to submit its funding requests directly to Senator Monford's office. Apparently, Senator Monford's staff didn't object to the city's direct submission. Based on that information, I recommended to Mayor LaPaz that the city of Carabelle submit their requests directly to the senator's staff. It would be unfair if we ranked Carabelle's requests without the opportunity to rank Appalachia Cola's requests. I also learned that same evening that the Florida House of Representatives deadline for submitting these legislative budget request form is today. Therefore, I submitted both of our requests, the new EOC funding and the Armory Fire, Fire Sprinkler System funding last week to Ms. Melissa Durham, Senator Monford's legislative assistant, and to Ms. Vicky Summerhill. Ms. Summerhill is continuing in the role of the legislative assistant to the vacant house seat formerly held by Representative Bisher. I provided a brief history on, excuse me, on both requests and explained that each of these requests are very critical to our community as a whole and not restricted to any city geographical boundaries. Board action to ratify my submission of both funding requests to Senator Monford and our House representative's office.
So moved. Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Mast, second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass it anonymous.
Item number three, as I just referenced, due to advertising issues, the January thirtieth legislative delegation meeting could not be considered the official meeting. The official legislative delegation meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February twenty-seventh at six thirty, here in your commission meeting room. I'll update you if there are any changes to this meeting date. Four, Ms. Lori Swizer, your ship administrator, has applied for and will receive a hundred and forty-two thousand seventy-five dollars in disaster recovery funding from the state. Ms. Swizer, in an attempt to better serve the qualified resident, amended the disaster strategy to raise the maximum award amount to ten thousand dollars from the previous five thousand dollar cap. Florida Housing approved the amended strategy. As a reminder, the ship program does not repair mobile homes. Board action to approve the amended strategy.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Mast. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass it anonymous.
On another ship program item, Ms. Pam Vathis, if I pronounced that correctly, is interested in serving on the housing board. Ms. Vathis would fill the vacant District Four seat, Commissioner Parrish can see, on that board. There's a candidate from District One that is considering serving. However, District Five's seat is still vacant. Board action to appoint Ms. Vathis to the Franklin County Housing Board.
So moved.
Sir.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it anonymous.
Mr. Tal Witten of Williams Communications and I met on Thursday, January twenty-fourth to discuss the firenet tower report, which I sent to each of you. We both agree, based on the report, the board might want to consider not investing any more funds to repair the current tower. Williams Communications and Southeastern Towers are looking at the cost to repair the current tower, replace the current tower, co-locate the equipment on another existing tower, along with other options for this board's review. Since the firenet is performing with the loan equipment in place and the county is looking at options, I inform Mr. Witten not to proceed with any items on the quote, such as a new fiber run that would possibly become unnecessary or perhaps obsolete, based on the direction the county may choose as it relates to the tower. I'll just, basically, I'm saving some money to make sure we don't do this fiber run and then you guys decide it's cheaper to co-locate another tower and we spent two, three, four, five thousand dollars on a fiber run that wasn't necessary. And there's a couple of other things too.
Do we need a big picture on how our communication system is really needing to be looked at?
Uh, Commissioner, I would tell you, once we get past our decision on how we're going, what we're gonna do about the tower, whether fix it, replace it, or move to another tower, then we can have Williams come in and yes, perhaps, uh, I'm sorry, present a long-term, uh, picture on communications.
Do we have money set aside and, uh, put together for this yet?
No, sir.
We don't?
Actually, I'm trying to get some numbers for them, so I can give to Mr. Parrish, so he in turn can file, um, an application with Triumph. They might be able to refund some money.
Project that Triumph might, might be able to fund if we have my justification.
Yeah.
It's always a risk of the Triumph, which I held up on the fuel farm, is that Triumph doesn't want to be the only funding source, so I'm not gonna say they would fund a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We spent a lot of money though, commissioners, on the fire net.
It's been a patchwork.
Yes. Mr. Lon A. Wilkins, a St. George Island resident, is interested in serving on the planning and zoning commission. Mr. Wilkins' education and experience, I attached an email, we stated that would allow him to fill the vacant science seat. If approved by the board today, Mr. Wilkins will serve as an alternate for three months, then sit as a regular member of the commission in the, in the science seat. Board action to appoint Mr. Wilkins of the planning and zoning commission as an alternate member.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parrish. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it anonymous.
Item eight, there's been quite a bit of progress at Lombardi, they, as no, also known as the waterfront park project. Thank goodness. The pavilion is complete and pending weather conditions, the decking portion of the project should be moving along this week. Based on the most recent schedule, the entire project should be completed by mid-April. I'll update the board if there are any changes to that current schedule. I tried my best to see the pavilion a few times, but every time I go there, the gates are locked. So I'll just have to get with a contractor and see when I could go in and visit.
Mr. David, you put that in some big writing in the papers, so, because I've, people have been asking me about it.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, sir. In addition to that, based on a very good question from Commissioner Parrish, there's a possibility that once they finish the deck, they'll move the lumber. And even though the, the project isn't complete, we might be able to allow launching from the, um, boat ramp while they're finishing up all the other parts of the project. It's just, we, they've got to use that lumber before somebody else borrows it. Okay?
Well, they need, you know, a lot of the people, it, it's not only oysters, man, gas fishermen, all other people use it and they cut down on their money, because.
The gas.
Yeah. All these people down here, not, they just got to come on the bridge and take more time and people losing time. They get paid by the half a day or. I think be fussing, but we, we probably be fishing through the lunch.
Yeah. And the gas ain't cheap either, Commissioner, so. Item nine, if that time again, staff receive your invitation to participate in the twenty-fourth annual Camp Gordon Johnson Parade on Saturday, March ninth at ten forty-five AM. This, this year's parade should include museum vehicles, vintage World War Two vehicles, vehicles from more recent conflicts, the local junior ROTC program, color guards, veteran auxiliary units, floats, antique cars, and of course, beauty queens. After the parade, you're invited to visit the museum. I'll, I'll, I'll fill out the application, I just want to make sure everybody's participating, so we have enough vehicles for, for everyone. And finally, uh, Florida Association of Counties Legislative Day is on Wednesday, March twenty-seventh in Tallahassee. And I quote from their, from their email, Florida counties are facing numerous challenges this year with prolonged disaster recovery from the last three hurricane seasons. The wa- widespread water crisis facing our state and the normal business and obstacles of running an efficient and effective government. It is imperative for local leaders to participate in the legislative process, so you can educate your peers in the legislature on the issues affecting their hometowns and advocate for your citizens and communicate, uh, communities. I continue to quote, commissioners and staff are encouraged to come to Tallahassee to assist in the lobbying efforts to protect home rule and prevent unfunded mandates. The governor, members of the cabinet, agency heads, and former commissioners have been invited. Uh, just, I need to know from each of you if you'll be attending, not that at this moment, but if you could, let me know by tomorrow, so we can start working on arrangements or whatever else needs to be done.
Okay.
I have one more, that's not on my report, because it was a public comment this morning. I know we're not ready yet, but whenever you guys have done enough research and you're ready for me to, uh, consider, uh, Mr. Langson being on the agenda, you guys have to make a motion. I know he'll be at a future meeting. I mean, I, I know he referenced next meeting, but he didn't realize, you guys have to do a lot of research first and then you, you make a motion and let me know when to put him on. Okay? And that's my report, commissioners. Any questions? Too close to lunch for questions, I agree. Okay.
Anybody got a thing for Mr. Marone? Keep up the good work.
Yes, sir.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Michael Shute.
I just, a couple of housekeeping matters procedurally. Um, wondering if the board would authorize me to conduct a public hearing to amend your R seven zoning district. Mr. Carrington informed me this morning that, um, there's apparently a conflict between our comp plan, maximum density units, which is ten, and then the actual zoning category is allowing for fifteen units. And we need to resolve that inconsistency. I'm, I'm not asking you to make a decision this morning, just authorizing me to schedule a public hearing, so that you can consider, uh, amending the ordinance at some future date. It will definitely not be the next meeting in February, most likely the soonest will be sometime in March.
So moved.
Sir.
Okay.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it anonymous.
Let me just say, this is something that fells to the cracks. Uh, I, I forget when, uh, we had the fifteen unit per acre in the comp plan and then, uh, for a variety of reasons, which I don't recall now, uh, we dropped it to ten, but we never go back and do the zoning. So this is something that should have been done ten years ago, just never got done.
Yes. Uh, then the other matter is requesting board authorization to schedule a public hearing to consider an amendment to your current travel trailer policy. I have approximately fifteen different cases sitting on my desk for enforcement. Uh, the current, uh, ordinance frankly doesn't have much in the way of a penalty, other than one I think may be a little too harsh, which is a second degree misdemeanor, which is potentially up to sixty days in jail and/or a five hundred dollar fine. So I wanted to bring back to you for consideration, possibly adopting a, a monetary civil penalty only, as opposed to a, a, a criminal penalty. Again, no decision to be made this morning. I mean, you can have the public hearing and decide to leave the ordinance the way it is, but at least wanted you to have an opportunity to consider that in a public setting, which is the only way that you can amend your ordinance.
Ladies and the bold.
So moved.
Sir.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I pass it anonymous.
I have nothing further for the board this morning. Thank you, commissioners.
All right. Next on the agenda will be a commissioner comment.
Mr. Chairman, I have to ask something.
Go ahead.
Michael, did, I forgot to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Did you forward to the commissioners the summary from the last ARPC meeting?
I think I did. Yes, I did.
I just, I forgot to ask. Just try to always do that, to make sure you guys know, uh, conversations are being had on our behalf.
Okay, anybody else with?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Um, two, uh, I've got a piece of property I wanted to give to the county. It's, um, on the east side of Gulf Shore Boulevard and it's dissolved. It, there's no location of it at all. And I've got the, uh, the county bill for the property. Um, I'd like to turn it over to the county. Um, wonder if you could facilitate that for me?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll leave that here, perhaps make a copy of it, so I'll have it and I'll leave that for you.
Yes.
I also wanted to, um, thank, uh, um, Ms. Johnson for indulging us and allowing us to have, uh, her deputy financial clerk here and/or her staff in the future. It, it appears that as we are looking at the devastation we've had with this Hurricane Michael and there's been, we've talked probably about eight or, maybe eight or nine different financial iss- issues just in this meeting alone today. And it, it gives me a comfort level, and I think the commissioners would support me, that we have a comfort level and peace of mind to have our, uh, financial staff here to tune in on issues. I know that, if you look at that issue where our property appraiser has potentially been, potentially downgrading her opinion on what the potential taxable value of our property will be relative to this hurricane, we need to really be thinking ahead about our money situation. And so as we move forward and thinking about, uh, millage rates and so on in our budgeting next year, uh, coming up, I will, I'm just pleased to know that our financial staff can be here to help us and, and I think the public would certainly appreciate the fact that when we ultimately decide that multiplier number, it's been with historical information that we've gotten ahead of time. I appreciate you being here. And I know that takes county staff and energy to be here. And I know workload permitting, you may or may not be here at every meeting, but we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Ball, we probably need to say some more, one more thing. So regarding this thing, uh, Mr. Chairman on the Triumph Board, one of the options they are banding about, which I think is a terrible idea, is to use the Triumph money as a loan to the counties to make up taxable. We don't, and I say this, I don't think we want to hear anything about loans, because the idea is we need relief. Anyway, okay.
We supposed to borrow ourselves out of debt?
Tell them. Tell them our credit can't go up, we can't get no loan. I bet, I shouldn't say that.
I mean, the, 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 the possible opportunities are purpose of added form relief, bridge loans and other possible we've ever, local government located Bay Frank Gobel, Colacane. But I'm like, we don't want those loans.
Nobody else does either?
Oh. I've been getting phone calls about this board on the airport advisory commission. So what, what, where we at with that?
The, uh, and I, I can't, I don't have a timeline, next time Jason's here, he'll can give you a timeline. There is, um, an update going on of the airport, it's either the airport layout planning or, or, or master plan. Uh, and that has a component where the citizens have to give input. And that's where your advisory board comes into play. Uh, but I'm waiting for Jason or John Collins to come to you all and say, this is where we're at in that schedule.
I just don't know where we are, I mean, I haven't kept up.
Do you need, do we need a board?
You, at some point, need citizen input, well, you.
You have a public head and have public input.
I, I defer to Commissioner, you may be right, but there has to be some public input.
You gotta have public input, don't say you have to recreate this board. This thing has been functioning fine with it, the way it is, the airport is in my district, and I don't pay for any airport advisory board, it's too cumbersome, it just creates too much controversy when people come on the board with their own hidden agendas. I'm the one that has to represent these people that live all around that airport, not the people on the island, not the people in Carabelle. I'm the one that represents the people that lives around that airport, I know what they want and what, what they will put up with and what they won't put up with. As far as planes flying over their house, going round and around all night long, if you don't live there, it don't bother you. I get the complaint, because I represent the people that live around it. So recreating this board and allowing all this other stuff to go on, these, these people that are trying to make decisions don't have to listen to the people that live around that airport. We're looking for jobs at the airport, we doing all that, we don't need nobody to tell us how to do that. So, you know, that's my opinion on that.
Is it against the law? That's all I want, if it ain't against the law, I don't care, but i- is it a lost name we put there, board?
No, you have to have public input, you have to have public input.
You have to have public input, but I think from the, the thing we went to last year, the A R P C helped put on about chapter three thirty-three, which we've still never done, we really didn't need an advisory board, because that would hinder us from going in, and if we ever did make that set of ordinances to turn in the D O T, then an advisory board would not be needed to have that, it would be public input, not just four or five people giving that kind of advice, it would be more public input, so.
Like a public head.
Right, right, exactly. So I do agree with you on that.
When you talking about doing a airport master plan or updating, you take input from the public.
It can't just be four or five, yes, that's true.
I can also just say, as a member of the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board for the past three years, it has been a very functional board. It has provided a huge amount of improvement to that airport, and, and a great deal of consultation we've had for both federal and state input. So there, I think there is a healthy process for board. I realize what we're saying in terms of layering and, and issues of direction, but I have found the watch care that this advisory board has had over the airport in terms of, well, I know we've saved the loss of several thousands of dollars of money in unpaid rent, and we had a damage to our, our apron during this last storm, and that's going to mount to several hundreds of thousands of dollars of the reimbursement to our airport. So I think there's pros and cons, and I think it's appropriate to look into it.
Well, I want a motion so we can look into it and, so I can stop getting the phone call, I mean.
You, you, you want a motion to be able to look into the potential of advisory board or not?
Yeah.
To stop, yeah. And I, I would make that motion for research purposes to see if the advisory board is appropriate for this airport.
I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bo.
Second.
Second by.
Getting phone calls.
Yeah, thank you. Second by Commissioner Mass, any more discussion?